It was in December. We were scheduled, as the chairman mentioned, last month to appear before the board, but we had a little lapse in timing between our payments to the paresque row. Since we were here in December, we have not made any changes to the application. There isn't really any substantial site work that's presented for the app, for the site. We're really asking right now for the board's direction as far as to what is necessary for the determination of the residency status. We've provided a couple narratives, one that described the bed and breakfast operation and another that described a separate entity's operation. And we also provided a number of items in regards to proof of residence, including licenses, utility bills, and other such things. When we had submitted that last, we asked the board if that was sufficient. There wasn't clear whether that would be sufficient. And since we've requested just some clarification on what's necessary to make that determination. So I know that the board's counsel and also board's planner have been looking at, or at least the planner, at this in other municipalities and thought that they may have some information that could help us make that determination. So that'll leave it to the board's or their consultant's direction.
Tonight, I don't think, believe the consultants are in any position to actually discuss the application because of the administration that had to be taken care of.
Okay.
What we do need to ask for tonight is consent to extend the application because I believe it was expired on two, five twenty. At that point, you would be placed on the agenda for discussion and decision that night. And then we would take it from there. Am I missing anything, Rick?
No. You just need a, you had to pick a date that you will put it on an agenda and then ask the applicant to consent to extend the time for the decision until that time.
What's the next meeting? Eighteenth, right?
Next date is the eighteenth. The next one is April first.
You'd be the first person on the eighteenth meeting.
Could we be the first person on the first?
On the?
April first?
April first?
Subsequent, yeah.
I can do that.
Okay. And?
What I suggest you do, any additional questions you have as far as clarification, or I would reach out directly, I believe you have all the contacts of the consultants, right?
Sure. We did reach out January thirteenth. We made inquiry as to what was necessary, but we will do that again so we can get some further clarification.
I have looked into that issue.
Yes.
And I've provided confidential advice to the planning board with respect to what I believe is inappropriate, appropriate conditions to be placed on it. It's not so much as a matter of a negotiation, in my opinion. And so I think the board will then, at the April first meeting, decide what it believes is appropriate with respect to the residency. There's not something that you need to provide before then.
Okay.
This would just be a condition in the resolution saying this is what would have to be shown as part of the, any resolution of approval, if that's what, the way that they go. This would have to be shown with respect to ownership and occupancy.
Okay. So I'll just confirm that before April first and we'll see you then.
April first, we'll see you then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We do need on the record your consent to go ahead and?
Extend the timeline.
Extend the time for the decision making until April one.
Yes. You have our consent and our applicant's consent until the April first timeline.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next item on tonight's agenda, Woodbury Villas. Review application to amend previously approved project refacing plan. This applicant requests an amendment to expand the number of certificates of occupancies issued prior to the installation of traffic signal at the intersection of Dundenberg and N.H. Road. Said subdivision is located off Dundenberg Road and is known as the, on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section two-two-five, block one, lot three dot two-two. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Barshav. I've, pageant and Rizel, counsel for the applicant. These are fairly straightforward applications, as I believe have been indicated in the various technical comments to the board. I'm going to speak initially to the, the matter of the certificates of occupancy. And Mr. Rabbits should be here any moment. He'll be speaking more about the proposal to switch the lots between the phases. We noted that there was a technical comment regarding data that was sought from the, our traffic consultant regarding traffic counts, count data. I have that information for you tonight, so if you'd like, I can give it to you. And I know you'll have to review it and have the consultants review it, but at least we've responded to those comments with this additional material.
The board's practice has been to receive the, any material like that would just go to the clerk who would go into the building department and distribute it that way enough this evening.
However, however you want to do it, I just wanted to let you know I brought it with me.
Behind your clothes. We all pointed in a different direction.
That's okay. I'm usually trying to take directions well. The, there was one other question that was raised in the comments about the traffic signal, about what might happen if it was never built. I can assure you this traffic signal will be built because if it isn't built, there's a lot of development, this development is never going to happen. So the applicant and the property owner is certainly going to put this traffic signal in. It's also fully bonded, I should also mention, to the planning board. The, the one question that I would have for the board is what the process will be going forward. I don't know that this particular switch in the number of certificates of occupancy, I don't know if this requires a public hearing. My hope is it does not, but I don't know what the position is of your counsel. What we, what I did in going back through this was, as I understand it, this number came about from calculation of traffic information and it was the number that was developed from that traffic data. All we've really done is to update that data and simply say that you could have a different number as a result of that data, not looking to change anything in terms of impacts and so forth. So my hope is that this is something that the board can approve without a public hearing, but we'll see what your counsel says. If a public hearing is necessary, there are people that are looking to move in before the Passover holiday, which begins on April eighth. It would be, if possible, we would like to see if we can wrap up at least this part of the application before then, so that people who have been waiting for some time to move in could move in. I think that the other proposed amendments to the project in terms of refacing, that definitely needs a public hearing. And whatever your timing would be on that, would simply ask that they not be tied together, that this particular change about the traffic light be considered separately, especially if you're going to need a public hearing, there'll be some additional time required regarding that. As far as the refacing, and I don't see Ellie here, so I guess this is going to fall on me. I think that the only point I would make that is, oh, there he is, okay. One point that I would make that, and then Ellie will pick up unless you have questions for me, on the traffic light. The one point is, is that there was a comment made that there is no infrastructure on a particular road. That infrastructure has in fact been installed and if you need, we have the sign off from the village confirming that. So that one factual piece I just wanted to emphasize. So before I stand down for the moment, are there any questions about the traffic light application and certificates of occupancy?
You have, we're done? Or we'll go to the consultants?
Well, I do want to ask one minute. On, excuse me, on the report that we, we received dated December twenty-sixth from Mazer to Mr. Rabbits, was this actually physically done or was it just a compilation of old numbers?
The traffic counts were physically taken.
Okay. Can you tell me when they were done?
Yes, that's in the material that's just been provided. So the day, the time, all of that information is in, I'm happy to read it to you if you'd like to know it now.
Just a date. I'd like to know the date.
Sure. The, the traffic counts were taken on Thursday, December twelfth. It was a four-hour period between six AM and ten AM. That was for the AM counts. And a five-hour period between two and seven. And then peak hours were calculated from that. So to the extent that this is being represented to you as what the traffic is, these were definitely not extrapolations of old material regarding the project. And we also confirm in this submission that the development was fully occupied. That was a question that was raised, whether a hundred and sixty-two occupied homes, and the answer to that is yes.
Was school in session during that time when the studies were done?
I believe so, because I don't think that the schools are out by December the twelfth. At least they never were when I was in school.
No, they weren't, probably.
Right. So I'm, I'm almost positive they were in session.
Twenty-third break started.
Yeah.
And do you have a peak period of, out of those peaks? I mean, when is the most numerous?
Yes. The, the peak hours were found to occur in the AM between seven forty-five and eight forty-five AM and between six and seven PM. And that's also laid out in Mr. Rosillo's submission that I've given to the clerk.
Now, with school dismissal, usually about two o'clock or so, to ten, and with Monroe Woodbury High School, I know there's a significant amount of traffic built up along that, that road. And I know one of the promises that the previous developer made was that there would be a traffic light there to help out Monroe Woodbury. So I really think that is an important issue still.
The, I'm, I don't want to be speaking past you, but what I can say is that when the counts were made, whatever the spike might have been in traffic at around school dismissal time, it wasn't large enough to be considered the peak. So apparently, the number of vehicles that are on the road between six and seven is greater than what happens at around school dismissal time, or that would have not been designated as the peak. So I'm assuming that because this is all based on the peak, that whatever is happening at school dismissal time will be handled by the same traffic light, since it can handle what's happening in the peak hour.
So you account the, the early morning one to people going to work, commuting and so forth?
So the, the counts were at a broad enough period of time that it would have taken into account the full commute in the morning, as well as everything from before school dismissal to people commuting from home, from work, and doing whatever else they might do in the evening. So the counts were done between six and ten in the morning and between two and seven in the evening. And then from within those periods, they calculated which was the peak hours within those two time ranges. So the data is for more than just the peak hour. It's for that whole range. And then from that, the peak hour is identified.
Those counts, though, those were for the development itself, right?
That's correct.
It wasn't the counts at the intersection, it was from the development.
No, this is, that's correct. This is to, this is to determine what amount of traffic the development is generating so that we could make a representation to you and to the members of the board that we are not generating the amount of traffic that was projected for the development to, that the development was projected to generate. And that's the reason why we can say there should be some additional certificates of occupancy, because we're not up to the level of traffic that was projected.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this? All right. Then let me turn this over to Ellie.
The second thing, the second thing, my name is Ellie Rabbits for Woodbury Villas. The second thing that we, we are requesting is, on the map that I provided you, it has two sections over there. One is on the left side, the one is on the right side. We'll start with the first one, which is lots one twelve, lot one to lot twelve, and lot one nineteen to lot one twenty-four.
Don't mind me. I'm new here.
So if you look at that map, you'll see the, the road, the infrastructure in front of all that lots is yellow, the same as phase six. That road was always part of phase six, and we couldn't get a sign of a phase six before all that was put in. Road, water, sewer, stormwater, and everything. But for some reason, then, when it was phased, that houses were actually put into phase one, not into phase six. So what we're requesting now is since all the infrastructure is done, and phase one is going to take a little bit longer to finish, that we should be able to get COs, and we have houses over there, that we should be able to get COs on their houses. So we're requesting they should put it into phase six. That's the first part of it. The second part of it, if you look on the right side, there's a section, the, it's lot one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, one ninety, two thirty-five, and two thirty-six. When we went to O and R, they should design the electric for phase one. They told us, and we submitted a letter from them, that they cannot stop in the middle of a road. So the only way they would be able to do it is if they go to the next intersection. So we're requesting that since we have to do all, since they are not going to give us electric, only if we do that part, and that part is part of phase seven, we should put that piece into phase one.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Dennis?
All right. In terms of, first off, the phasing, just to let you know how this worked. In the beginning, going back into two thousand and six, there were seven phases, just one through seven. And it was contemplated they would be built in the order they were listed, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. That changed very, very soon, and the developer decided they wanted to build phase one and phase two. Well, actually, phase two, they said initially, and they were going to hold off one. They came in and they, they revised their phase plan to include a, a build order in addition to the phasing. They kept the phase numbers and they decided to do it in a different build order. So the, some of the first changes were in the build order. And then they, they found that there really wasn't a big market, if you will, for the, the senior housing. So they split that in half, in two A and two B. And there were a number of changes that took place like that, and there were a number of different phases. The traffic signal was originally supposed to be built when phases one and two were constructed. It didn't talk about COs. It talked about, at the completion of the second phase, the traffic signal was supposed to be installed. And that was like at a hundred and fifty-one or a hundred and fifty-two units. After the phases started coming in, most of the off-site improvements were triggered by the development in phase two. You couldn't have phase two A unless you built the water tank and you built the pump station. Just couldn't happen. So those were triggered in there, but not, not the traffic signal. The board became aware after a certain number of phase plan revisions that that wasn't going to work, because you're never going to have phase one and two built and trigger the, the light going in, because phase one just wasn't going anywhere at that time. So the board at one point, I think it was around the fifth development in the phase revisions, that the board decided to attach it to COs. Had they done it originally, it might have been a hundred and fifty-one. That was what was in phases one and two. But in any event, at the time they did it, they coupled together the phases that were under construction in the beginning, and they added up to a hundred and sixty-two. And that's why that came about. And that's why that was the number of COs. It was the closest to that. And I don't think there was a magic number where all of a sudden, you know, the light becomes necessary or unnecessary. It's a gradual process. It also depends upon the development takes place in the area. They have correctly done, I think, they've done an analysis of their site, how much traffic it's generating now at a hundred and sixty-two COs, and, and how much it was predicted. And there's a differential there, and they've said, well, we can have some more units. And that's when they would produce the number of vehicles originally anticipated from the site. But the light is not going on the site. The light is going at an intersection that's affected by the site. There are a number of mechanisms, and Andre will talk better to it than I can, but there's a number of things that affect that intersection. It's not just this development, it's the background development that's taking place around it. That signal, that, that intersection may be operating at level service C, it could be operating at level service F now, I don't know. But it, it is operating at some level of service, and no matter what they're generating, they are impacting that intersection by the number of vehicles that turn out of their development and go to that location. To Richard's point before, or Robert's point, that may not coincide with the peak from this site, because the peak of that intersection, because of the school and because of other things, may be at an off-peak time. So if it fails at, say, three o'clock in the afternoon, and they're adding not their peak, but something less, but they're adding something to it, it may have some impact. I don't know. I, the intersection wasn't analyzed in this review. Okay. So Andre will speak better at that, but that's just to let you know how that hundred and sixty-three units came about, from my review and my understanding, my being here through that period of time. As far as, let's see, oh, the breakdown on which units are in which phase, the board has generally left that to the applicant, that you haven't tried to drive that ship. They've come in with the various phase plans. You've looked at those phase plans, and you've allowed them to move units around, as long as it makes sense. And if, if the development stops after phase five, and, you know, let's say one never gets built, or, or seven never gets built, the board's position was always as long as the system will function, the way they describe it, for the phases that are built, and they can function on their own, you have not tried to interfere with the number of units that went in each phase. They can move them around. It was always driven by the applicant, and I looked at the, the lots that they intended to transfer. They make sense from the standpoint of infrastructure and traffic circulation, and apparently they make sense for O and R and their work. So I really don't have any, anything offer on that, other than as long as it works, and it seems to, that would be fine. The question is when those billings can be built and when the COs could be issued in terms of the infrastructure improvements. One of the questions you asked me was, there is a table on the plan that they've provided that lists all of the onsite and offsite improvements that are required for those units to function. For example, the water systems, the sewer systems, this traffic signal, it's, I guess they also have some clubhouses on the site. Almost all those improvements are complete and serves in function now, and working. The only two that aren't, the traffic signal, which you're talking about now, and the clubhouse. The clubhouse, quite frankly, was tied to phase one, but that's another one where a lot of the non-active adult, but all the other phases, have started to build out. And you may want to consider in this application tying that to COs as opposed to the phase. Because the original thought for the board was phase one was going to be built first. And when the phase one units were built out, you would have a clubhouse. Right now, you've got all the housing there, and you don't have the clubhouse, because phase one hasn't been constructed. It's just something I didn't realize until I started looking at this plan now. So that may be something you want to consider if you take action on this phase plan. And I think that's it for now. I mean, you have something on the sidewalks?
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, okay. Well, as far as the sidewalks are concerned, I've opined to Gary on a number of occasions. First, there was a request, I don't think it was this block, it was another one, Catskill High Route, I think it was.
Right.
There was a request to change the sidewalks on that from one side of the street to the other. I told Gary, first off, I don't think it's a field change, that we couldn't do that without the board. There are changes that we can make in the field. For example, a grade elevation is not appropriate, and we decide to raise it a little bit. Or a drain is in a location, we move it, you know, twenty feet to be at the low point. We work that out with the developer, and we just tell them to proceed. And usually, I write the board a letter to tell you we made a change, and that's all it is. In this case, they asked for a, a field change, and we said, no, that's not a field change. You can come back to the board. From an engineering standpoint, if they have grade issues on one side, and it's much better on the other side, well, you would require, let's say, on the side that it's located on, if there's a grade problem, you'd have to build a retaining wall or access issues, and moving it to the other side will work. I really don't have a problem from an engineering perspective. It might be an improvement. However, from a development standpoint, this is a file map. Anybody who's buying a house looks at their house, or looks at their lot, and you have either a sidewalk or you don't have a sidewalk. When you move it, you make, change the conditions. That, I think, is a change that may be significant enough where you'd review it, and maybe you'd have to have a public hearing. I'd have to defer to Rick on that, but it does make a change. Now, it's a big change, and I've done this in some communities where it's a big change, where the homeowner is responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalk. If they have to, you know, shovel a sidewalk, and they have to maintain it in good condition, then it's a significant issue. And I've been in many public hearings, that that creates a problem, when either you put a sidewalk in that has never been there, or if you were to change the location of a sidewalk. In this case, I understood that the HOA may be taking care of that, so it may make that issue go away.
Over here, the way it works is that nine, nine feet on both sides of the roads from the curb belongs to the road.
Well, that's always the case.
So that's, that's owned by the HOA, and they, they take care of all the sidewalks personally.
Okay. Well, most of the roads throughout the community here, we own, we, the village owns additional property beyond the curb line. The sidewalks are located in that. Nevertheless, our laws say that the homeowner is responsible to, to maintain the sidewalk in front of their house, even though it's on public property. That's not unusual, and that's not just Woodbury, that's many, many communities I work in. So that's normally, or that's typically the way I see that it is. So, but if you have a different condition, that may influence the board on making that decision. The only thing I can't do from the drawing?
It's one, it's one more thing besides that we're going to have to put up some big retaining walls. If you look at the map, half of that road doesn't even have houses, because it's the water tower over there, if you look at the map.
Okay.
So it would make more sense that you have on the side where you have the houses, so people can use it.
All right. Well, the only thing I'd say is this, in principle, I don't disagree with that. If, if there's steep slopes on one side, and it would create retaining walls, that we can move it to the other side, and it's, and it's more appropriate from an engineering standpoint, that'd be fine. The problem with these drawings is these are a fifty scale. It's very difficult to review for that type of detail. We would need something to at least a thirty scale, or something down, as a double scale, so I can read it and take a look at the contour lines and make sure that the plan that you're proposing works. But that's a detail. I would say that in concept, I wouldn't have an issue with that, but I do think there's still a homeowner issue if the lots have been sold, and I think that you'd want to hear from the public. been sold. And I think that you'd want to hear from the public. So, that's all I have unless you have any questions on it.
Questions for them?
No, we'll hold it, Andre first. We're dueling traffic consultants tonight. We kicked Major off the table.
Okay. So regarding the traffic, um, so, uh, one of, one of our comments was regarding, you know, supplying traffic counts. So apparently that's been done. You know, we'll review that when we get it. Um, and confirming the number of occupied units, that was done. Uh, one of the, the key things here is say your construction schedule, like how long is this going to take, um, to put the signal in and the intersection improvements? Cause that's kind of critical. Um, if you do grant approval for 30 additional units, how long would that 30 units be without the improvements in? Um, and then regarding, uh, the intersection itself, I know the applicant had provided, um, evidence that the traffic volumes generated by the development are less than what the traffic study had estimated, but we don't know exactly what the background traffic is at that intersection, um, and if it's higher or lower than what was predicted in the report. Um, so that's, you know, that's one thing that potentially there could be maybe a new traffic count standing at the intersection to compare to previous estimates. Uh, that's one way of determining that. Um, but, so really the construction schedule is kind of important to see how long that would take, when it would begin and when it would end.
So, uh, there is that information in the submission, uh, tonight. The traffic signal installation has already partly begun. It was halted because of the winter weather and the inability to have asphalt, uh, put down. Uh, some of the, two of the three mast arm signal pole footings are in place. Uh, it's approximately, the estimate is about six to eight weeks for the work to be done for everything else. And so it's just a question of when those permits are issued and then work begins. And we're not talking about a protracted period of time. So only a couple of months until the work is completed. Um, and I'm not sure what the, whether or not the board is actually, or consultants are actually asking for traffic counts for the existing intersection. I mean, normally what happens, uh, when there are these kinds of modifications is one looks at the traffic that is being generated from the project because the background conditions vary independent of what the project is. Those have nothing really to do with us as much as the circumstances that are out there. Uh, but if the board believes it's necessary, um, given where we are, I believe there is another project that has done recent counts. It's further up the road. My understanding is, is that the background traffic and what the existing traffic is, what the background was that was projected and what the existing traffic is are approximately the same. And if it's important to the board and to the consultants, we'll get that information and provide it to you.
Any questions for Adrian? Jonathan?
Uh, Jonathan Lockman, uh, village planner from Nelson Pope Voorhees. Uh, you have our memo of February 28th and a lot of it's been covered by others. Uh, our comment one in general, the, this idea that, um, the threshold be, uh, adjusted to acknowledge actual traffic as opposed to projected traffic at the time of approval. We don't have any problem with that idea. We also really don't have any problem with the idea of moving the sidewalk if it's a better location, but really our comments are all about submissions and the format of how to process this. Um, uh, our submission comment two was about the timing of the counts and the number of units occupied and, and we've had a new submission tonight that, uh, well, that we can all review. Um, and the, uh, our comment three was about the re-phasing plan and the 18 lots being moved out of Phase One to Phase Six and the five lots being shown as moved from Phase Seven to Phase One. Um, most of us don't have Dennis's encyclopedic knowledge of the history at our fingertips. And for those of us who haven't been around the last 15, 20 years, it's pretty baffling to try to count the movement in and out of phases and how that the phases don't relate to what got built. And what we really need to know is where the 162 units got built. It, there isn't a picture like a 162 dots on 162 out of those lots. Um, and I certainly think we could use a better explanation from the applicant of what Dennis gave to you, which is, um, you know, how, how do the changes in the phases relate to this issue of, uh, 162, uh, units completed and where the next 30 would go? Um, I wasn't able to get that from what was submitted. Um, and, uh, also in general, uh, our comment four relates to the fact that they've given us diagrams showing that we want to change this to this, uh, but we'd need actuals, plan sheets with dates. Uh, in other words, the, the sidewalks probably appear on a lot of different sheets of the subdivisions on file. All the sheets where that, those sidewalks appear would need to be changed with new, latest revision dates of 2020. They've given us diagrams that are, that have old dates on them with arrows and, and, uh, you know, we'd need a more, more formal change pages with, with, uh, with the modern revision dates, especially on the re-phasing plan. The re-phasing plan also still says there's 162 units. You know, the number 162 hasn't been changed to 192. So, so anything that's being amended, we need, um, uh, really more official amended pages wherever they appeared in the original application. Uh, and, um, our fifth comment was we'd, uh, we don't see any major changes to, uh, the secret process through, cause these really aren't substantive, um, in, in environmental issues to any great degree, but we would defer to the attorney on, on any, on what the right procedure would be for any secret changes if there is one. That's our report.
Do we have any questions with Jonathan? Rick?
The only, uh, comment that I have that hasn't been already covered is in response to the query on the public hearing. And a public hearing would be required for this. First, um, to my knowledge, this board has never before, when a singular application with several components has been presented, said that we can have a public hearing on some of those and not a public hearing on other portions and sort of, um, for purposes of public hearing and process allowed multiple tracks at the same time. Um, some subject to public hearing and others not. But putting aside that issue is that, um, the idea of the cap was in the original, it dealt with phasing rather than specific COs. Um, and then a later resolution, uh, which was an amended resolution, also subject to a public hearing, was, um, change it to the 163. Um, this is a change again to that aspect of the approvals and therefore clearly is an amendment and under the code, an amendment requires a public hearing. So a public hearing would be required.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
Chris, one more thing. Uh, Jonathan challenged me, so I opened up another chapter in the encyclopedia. I do, I do recall back, um, that there was some restriction on Phase Seven from development from the Cornell family that owned that lot originally. I don't know where that is now and I don't know if you have any knowledge on that. Maybe that was satisfied. Is there anything that you know of a, a restriction on development in Phase Seven? Okay. I don't want to throw something out there. I'll take a look at that. There'll be time before the next meeting. I'll take a look and talk to Gary about that, but I do recall something about that. It may have been satisfied along the way. Okay.
Any questions for Rick or Dennis?
Dennis, let's go ahead. You said, uh, correctly, that the traffic cap goes beyond this front there. You said in the beginning, you talked about...
Well, they did a traffic count of the vehicles, uh, coming from this development and then they projected what additional traffic would come from the development, um, if they went to additional units, uh, showing that in their opinion it is going to be at or less than what was originally predicted. What I was talking about was the background development at the intersection of Nenninger and Dunderberg.
In, in other words, perhaps this development has generated, I'm just for argument's sake, a third less traffic than we thought it would. But also the, at the intersection of, uh, Dunderberg and Nenninger, uh, other developments have caused that intersection to have 40% more traffic than, uh, than we thought. Then the fact that, that this development is generating less traffic than we thought it would, uh, wouldn't, uh, wouldn't have, uh, saw, uh, wouldn't make that intersection 30, 40% better because the background might have, uh, in, the background traffic might have increased faster than the traffic from Woodbury Villas. So that's, that's really the, the question raised by the, uh, traffic consultant and Dennis.
And it wouldn't really have to be at an accelerated rate, although it could be, but it's the passage of time. Uh, it's 13 years since this was approved. I don't know if the anticipation was this was going to be done faster. I think the initial, uh, feeling of the developer was they were going to sell quickly because they, they had just completed a development north and it had sold very quickly. Um, and we went through 2008 and bad economy and things slowed down.
What's new?
Well, I, I want to understand a couple of things. So we're all going to do the traffic light. I mean, that doesn't sound like an issue, right?
What, you said?
The traffic light? That sounds like it's a...
Well, it's, it's a given. It has to go.
Has to go.
But I think on the next mission, we're going to need to see the counts at Nenninger and Dunderberg. Cause I agree, having drought, you know, traveling that way during the day, that intersection is, is busy when the buses are coming out, after school activities and there are, it is hard to make that, it's almost impossible to make the left during busy times and hard to make a right.
And they're already building the traffic light. So, it's bonded. So there's, there's traffic lights in.
Right. The traffic...
They just want, they...
I can't hear you, John.
Oh, I'm sorry. This microphone thing. Can you hear me now? All right. So we're all, so I just wanted to understand the traffic light, which is bonded and halfway built.
Correct. The traffic, the traffic light is happening for sure, without doubt. The only question is timing and whether these already built units can get their certificates of...
Now, there's 162 units built and another 30 that were built that shouldn't have been built because the traffic light wasn't in? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, it's, it's...
They don't have a CO.
They don't have a CO. That's the way the, it was, it wasn't done on building permits. It was done on issuance of COs when the trigger.
Right. Joseph...
So they could build as many as they want, but they can't occupy.
Right. The, the, the thing was, and the reason why we came to the board and applied in December was we had anticipated that this work would be completed in the fall. And then there would be the normal course of issuing certificates of occupancy because the traffic light would be in and then there would no longer be a cap. So because of the difficulty in completing the work and then having to shut down for the winter, we now have these homes that have been built and just need certificates of occupancy to be occupied. They've been sold. The people who bought them would like to move in.
So that could happen after the traffic light is complete. Is that what we're driving for?
No, what we're, what we're asking...
They want it before the traffic light.
I see. Well, that can't happen, right?
That's why they're here.
That's why they're here. They're asking us to allow that to happen before the traffic light is...
So I just tip my hand at what my position is?
No.
Right. So basically what, what we did, just what we did was we put in information to show that the traffic up to now from the project, the units that are occupied...
And we beat the traffic thing up. We got it.
Okay.
We're, we're there. I just wanted to try it under. Now, the clubhouse is my other question because that should have been built in Phase One. Where is the clubhouse?
Which clubhouse are you talking about?
The one by, uh, Nenninger.
Okay. Phase One.
Is that close to any of the existing homes that are built now?
It's in Phase One, which we're building right now.
Okay. So that will be built?
Yes.
See, the thing is just that in...
It's part of Phase One, so.
In the original resolution, it said, this is our Phase One. We're going to build this first.
Right.
Right? And when we build that out, we're going to put a clubhouse in so that when we finish with the Phase One, number of fa, units in Phase One, that's sufficient to generate the need for the clubhouse and then we'll continue to build out. What has happened since then is that Phase One hasn't been completely built out, um, but they've chosen to go ahead through re-phasing, et cetera, to allow more units to receive COs than were in the original Phase One. So the question is, ought to have that triggered the need for the clubhouse.
Right. And then as far as the submittal format in these drawings, I agree that they need to be cleaned up so that we can understand them better.
At the very least, there's definitely going to be a re-submittal here. Cause our engineer needs it at the, at the correct scale. We need to see it at the correct scale because this is extremely difficult to read on paper.
Understood.
Um, and we're going to need a public hearing. So, you, before I make motions and before questions.
Okay. Yeah, I just have some questions for Mr. Barshav. Um, in your January 15th submission, um, A, remove lots one through 12 and lots 119 through 124 from Phase One and includes, include those lots in Phase Six. Um, halfway through, you say these lots were originally part of Phase Six of the project and for reasons which are not entirely clear, removed into Phase One in 2012. So I pulled the narrative that came in with 2012 and it's, it's very clear why those lots were moved. And it looks like it was a safety issue because of traffic. So I don't see what has changed now that would indicate why they should go back. Did you read the narrative? Do you have the narrative?
I will go get it. I did not, uh, read it in terms of preparation for this, but I'll certainly look to get it for sure and address that for you.
Okay.
The, the, my understanding is, um, is that if, well, let's put it this way. If there was and remains a safety issue or something else that was it, was the reason for the prior shift, then we will look at that and we will address that in a submission to you since we have to provide this. So I appreciate you referencing that so we can go back and take a look at it.
Okay. Yeah. Because it says in this area, there's no, in this area, there is no area for the traffic to properly turn around when they get to the end of the road. Instead, we propose to move Phase Six back to the turnabout near lot HE 13. In this way, the traffic can turn and proceed back on Road B or elect to use Road F instead.
Right.
This will allow for a better temporary traffic flow. The lots that were shown on the previous phase between HE Four and HE 13 will be moved from Phase Six to Phase One.
I think, and we'll, we'll verify this for you, but I think that what that was referencing was a condition that was temporary and was in existence at that time before what was completed was completed.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll confirm that for you.
Okay. Yeah. Because looking at all of these maps and then looking at the narratives and all the different applications that's gone, that have gone back and forth between roads being named, roads being referred to as...
Letters, letters.
Letters. And then lots being referred to by number and then lots being referred to as HE, ME, whatever. It's, it's, feels like a convoluted mess.
It is.
And I'd like to see something streamlined so that we're all on the same page.
Sure.
Because, I mean, we're just dealing with it as a board. I can't imagine what the residents are dealing with when they're looking at offering plans and versus all these changes.
Well, we will certainly make sure that we get you a clear, concise, and I'll reemphasize clear narrative that addresses the particular...
And a map because I cannot even read the numbers on this map.
Yes, that's fine. Could you, would it be, would you be kind enough to give me the date of the submission that you're looking at?
Sure. It was July 5th, 2012. And that's how they have it. They have it with the, uh, resolution number nine in the, uh, in the building department.
Okay. Number nine. And who was that submission from? That was from...
This was from the applicant from Woodbury Junction.
Okay. Thank you. Cause I didn't represent them. Because I didn't represent them then, so I...
No, I know. But that's, I think that's another problem between the differences in the maps and the, everything that's being handed to us.
Understood.
And just to amplify what Ms. Priglioni was saying, when she says, "We need a map," I would suggest that you could show where the 162 units have been completed, that have a certificate of occupancy, and then where the other 30 are that are completed but don't have a CO.
Sure.
So that we can see where the 192 are and because the fact that they're in possibly three different phases and all of that is really impossible to understand without a picture.
And could you cross-reference the roads that you're referring to by name as well as AD, whatever?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a comment. The second entrance and exit further down Nenninger Road, how widely used is that? Or are the new houses that are being built going to be accessing that more so than the one that's on Dunderberg Road?
Which of those?
There's the other entrance further down.
Is one being used more than the other?
Yes.
Depends on where you come and where you go.
Are the new houses being built towards that direction?
The, our houses all over the place.
Yes, I know.
Not particularly just towards that direction.
That's really what we're going down to. We need a map.
Could we have a study to see how much is used, utilized?
If that's what you want, that's what we'll ask for. It's known on your map is entrance one. So we're going to see a traffic count on entrance one because I know people...
They did a traffic count for both entrances.
Did they?
Yes. Absolutely.
That's what we just got.
Yes.
Okay. We didn't see it yet, though.
Yes, yes.
Well, I think it's in more detail with whatever...
The traffic study was on both entrances.
That's cool.
So that includes both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
That was in the original submission, yes.
Mm-hmm. Right.
I just have one other question. So there's 162 COs that have been issued to date. How many more homes are at the point where they need COs? Just 30? Or is this building just continuing?
There's 30 that are at the place where they have been completed or are virtually completed and are ready to be inspected and have their certificates of occupancy issued. I don't know what else is in the pipeline.
There is more houses being...
How many more building permits are open beyond that?
I think right now there's like the low 40s.
40 on top of the 30?
No, no.
Oh.
Total of 40.
Total. Okay.
And those are within approved phases of work to be completed? Because the phasing plan is all over the place.
When you look on that map, all the phases besides phase one, seven, and 2B, I think it is, all the other phases are completed. When I say complete, I'm talking about infrastructure and all the infrastructure, not houses.
So the adult active is finished?
No, that's the, that's the one, that's 2B, I think. 2A or 2B, I'm not sure.
2A or 2B, you're saying? Okay. You're away from the mic and I'm having a hard time.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
2A is partially built out.
Yes. 2A is partially built out. 2B is nothing done on, correct.
Okay. And that clubhouse is to be done when all of that's finished?
Which clubhouse?
The, in the active adult.
Active adult house is completed for years and...
It's not completed. I've been inside.
Okay.
There was supposed to be a resistance pool. There's nothing there. There's a hole in the ground, a hole in the floor. Yes? No? You agree? You don't agree?
In the, in the, in the plan, that really needs to be built when the active adult is completed, but...
So, but you just said that it was completed. It's not completed.
Completed, a building that's built and has a CO and you use it, that's what I meant complete.
Okay. But it's not completed as to what it was supposed to be. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Prior to the public hearing, did we agree that on the next, we're going to get another submission before the public hearing, correct?
Yeah, we're not set on a public hearing now, are we?
Again, we're going to have some kind of symbol, like our consultants say, maybe you're seeing what's completed on 162, 163, and maybe another different symbol for the 30 that you're requesting. And I'd like to see on top of that, if you have another 20, 30, or 40 planned this year, I'd like to see that on the map as well because that's going to tell us where the drivers are more or less.
Yeah. The, so we're clear, we'll be happy to show on the map all of the various homes, the ones that have a certificate of occupancy, the ones that we are requesting that you allow us to get a certificate of occupancy before the traffic light is put in, and then any other lots where there is a building permit that has been issued, but we're not asking for a certificate of occupancy for the traffic. But that way you'll know at least what's under construction. The only thing I would say is that, just so that we're clear, is that as to this last category, it has no impact on traffic because we're not asking that those units be given a certificate of occupancy before the traffic light goes in. So, but we'll show you the information so you know what's being built where.
And again, my opinion is with all these changes, I mean, I've been on the board 12 years and we've seen a lot of changes between the different phases, I may want to do a site visit to see if you can retain any retaining walls, did one? Correct?
I think that's going to be on the new submission, right? With the sidewalks?
If we, if we don't move the sidewalk to the other side, we'll have to put retaining walls, correct?
I may want to do a site visit.
Okay. You want to wait till you see the next submission?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Okay.
I just have one other question. So as far as the phases, are all, or what phases are that, is the infrastructure complete in what phases?
All the phases besides phase one, seven, and 2B.
One, two, three, four.
I says, hold on.
Okay. Thank you.
And phase one is, I would say, probably 40, 50%. We're working on that now.
Any other questions or requests out of the applicant?
Well, after all, the infrastructure is complete, does that open up the door for development on all phases? Is that like...
Well, they, yes. I mean, the only thing I don't know is the restriction I mentioned on seven. I'm not sure about that. It may not be a restriction, but I'd like to check that first. But yeah, they can start. They'd have to apply, they'd have to build the infrastructure in one and seven if they're going to start building homes.
I believe it's only something five acres are supposed to be exposed at any given time, correct?
That's on a different permit. That's on their MS4. That's their general construction permit from DEC.
But it still applies here?
That's, yes. That's exposed ground. Yeah.
Okay.
And there were originally seven phases of construction on the original application because that's the way that developer thought it would happen. Now a new developer is developing it according to...
Well, even that developer changed. The developer we had originally had one through seven, then they went back and they made some changes due to market conditions, due to infrastructure, due to whatever reasons they had. And so some phases got split in half, 2A and 2B, and I think there was, was it 5A and 5B?
There's five.
I think so. So anyway, there are a number of different phases, then some lots morphed back and forth between. I mean, it all came to the board. The board reviewed it and there were public hearings and there were resolutions granted allowing those modifications after thorough review.
So other than the potential restriction on seven and the five-acre exposed-ground restriction by the DEC, are there any other restrictions about development?
There's lots in your approval. I don't know if you call it restrictions. There are requirements. You mentioned one, stormwater, soil erosion, sediment control. There's water and sewer infrastructure that would have to be extended. Those are just conditions of development.
And are there additional conditions of development added to an amendment site plan?
If any, you can attach reasonable conditions to any action you take, dependent upon what you receive.
Dennis, we're, you said we're working off the ninth amended resolution, right?
There's, let me just go through that. That's not all that clear. There were, yes, right now, the effective phase plan is the ninth amended phase plan.
Okay.
There was a 10th, try not to make this complicated. The 10th was submitted, reviewed by the board, a public hearing was held, and it was approved. The applicant failed to submit the plan for signature and filing in the building department in sufficient time and it lapsed. Rather than coming back and trying to get approval on it, they came up with another phase plan and they called it the 11th phase plan. So the 10th wasn't signed, so it wasn't effective. They came up with 11th. The 11th was reviewed by the board. It was open to a public hearing. There were many comments made. The applicant decided to withdraw that application, so they withdrew the 11th. I talked to Rick about this one and we had some back and forth today and we're calling this the 11th parentheses 2020 application. Only to try to not go and pretend like there was a 10th and 11th, but I don't want to confuse the file documents when we talk about 11th application. We're going to call this the 11th 2020 application because that one never went anywhere and that's what this is.
Well, that, but that was my question because if the 10th, the 10th, nothing came of the 10th.
Well, the 10th was approved by the board. It just wasn't signed, so I don't...
So what does that mean?
It's, well, I'll let Rick. I'm getting, I'm...
You're starting to tread.
That's confusing.
Well, by labeling it this way, it ought not to be confusing. I think what would be confusing if the one that is presently applicable is ninth and then you started to say this one is the 10th because then someone looking through this is going to say, "Wait a second, there already was a 10th that was approved." So just to keep the consecutive nature is that the 10th was approved. That was an action that you took. Now, it ended up, that's not in effect because they didn't get the plan signed, but there still was a 10th rephasing plan that was approved by this board. There was an 11th that was submitted but then withdrawn. So there's also in the building department, an 11th amended rephasing plan. So in order to not confuse people that there's 11th and now we're talking about 11th, which one are we talking about? We're going to put it as 11th parenz 2020 to make it clear that this is the one we're talking about now, even though there was two between there that simply encode it, right? They just never came about and approved.
But again, even though the 10th was approved, the applicant cannot do anything that was approved in the 10th.
Correct. That's right.
That's what I'm going to make clear. Okay. Thank you.
Any other? Any of the board members feel different? I don't feel we're in a position to set a public hearing until we get the next submission.
Mm-hmm.
Are you guys clear on what we're looking for in the next submission?
Yes, we're clear on what needs to be done for the next submission. Also, just want to let the board know, I do believe, I hope I'm stating this correctly, that all of those submissions and plans and whatnot were the former owner. I don't believe that we are the ones that were doing all of that. I hope so. The last approval was 2012, I believe. That's right. So I just want to let you know that there's a new group in town. We're going to try to do things in a way that's rational, clear, we're going to be responsive and not have this kind of up-down, sideways and so forth. It is confusing. I just want you to know, look, we've all been through difficult situations. We're going to try to make your job as easy as possible. We, we might, if it makes it easier, the, the phasing plans that we're talking about that we've discussed in terms of lots going back and forth, if it's simpler, we can take that application and just put that back for a short period of time. The one that has real urgency is the traffic. And if it makes it simpler for you, we can, we can just simply deal with that one application alone, address those issues, get you those submissions, and then once that's done, we can come back in and file those others and then proceed to deal with those. It seems to me that because of the confusion of what was being discussed in terms of maps and they're not being at the right scale and so forth, those issues are not as important. So why don't we just simply say that the application that would go forward is the original submission of just wanting to get the phasing altered for the certificates of occupancy that would allow us to go above the 162. We'll give you the traffic counts or the information to show what's happening in the other intersection. At that point, I believe, if I understood everybody's comments, you would have all of the information that you would need to be able to, subject to a public hearing, be able to make a decision on that application. Is that process workable to the board?
And I'll invite the planning board. As always, an application that comes before you is really in the control of the applicant, what the applicant wants to propose, what the applicant doesn't want to propose, and you react to that, all right? You don't sort of get together with the applicant literally or figuratively to sort of define what their application ought to be. So if the applicant wants to go ahead and withdraw the sidewalks and the rephasing aspect of this from their application, they have a right to do so. They should have a clear letter sent to the building department so that it's clear in the building department that in fact you are withdrawing that from your application so that your application now contains only the traffic light and the requested excess COs above the 162. And then you, you would perforce go ahead and just review that aspect of it because that's the only thing that's remaining in the application.
And I think that's what we would do. We will do that. We'll get a letter in tomorrow to the building inspector to confirm that. And this way, I'm going to, I hope I'm not going to mangle this. Capriglioni? Is that correct?
Capriglioni.
Capriglioni. Okay. My glasses aren't making it out that clearly. And this is particularly in light of the types of comments that you are making about the confusion and, and the other comments that Richard was making about the maps and so forth and your consultants. So we'll put that, we'll get that right back together again for you. We know what you want. We'll give that separately, hopefully in a set of submissions that really work. It'll be clear and then you'll be able to move forward with that separate and apart.
Okay. But I think, Rich, you wanted, you wanted to see a map with the 162 plus the 30.
With a symbol like... That's going to be provided.
Right. We'll do that. Yeah, that's right. We're going to get you that.
Will it be provided with the, with the reduced application that just focuses on the traffic light?
That's right. We'll get that because if you want to see where these lots are, it's not a problem. Happy to do that. So we'll get you that. We'll give you the traffic information about the performance of the intersection and then I think that will give you the information that you have requested.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I have one, another question for Dennis. In looking at this reduced scale with the different phases, I'm trying to see the roads that, you know, and here they're colored blue, yellow, green, pink. Does it make sense to have the roads one color so we can see?
The colors are indicative of what phase it was being built in because, for example, when phase, I believe it was five was being, or six was being built, you had to have the road extended down to Nenninger. So they showed it in the same color and extended it down. So the color was saying that even though it's surrounded by a different phase, the road was being constructed earlier. In other areas, there were sewer lines that were built and they had to put a gravel access road in in case the subdivision wasn't developed in subsequent phases. So the colors do have some significance. If it's hard to read, we can ask them to break it out differently. One, the map we originally had, what they did at one time was they took a phase in
in any extensions of roads and just put it by itself. And you had phases one through, actually nine build orders with phases and phases split, showing what tangents they had coming off in terms of road. That might be clearer for you. But that's, there is significance to the colors, just to let you know.
I'm just talking about the roads, trying to see all the roads. Are they all, are they not all completed, the roads?
No, not all of them. Seven is not built hardly at all. Phase one is probably half. Phase two B is hardly built at all. There's trails that run in there, where they have some sewer lines, but it's just dirt.
Yeah, well, maybe just don't complete it, maybe it's a little, it's hard to see in some areas where the roads are.
I understand.
And the actual names, because now most of them are named up there. They're not road A, B, C, D.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
The, just so that I understand, your, if we get material in, I think it's two weeks in advance of your upcoming meeting, so the earliest that we could be back on would be?
April 1st?
Okay.
If you get it in two weeks before April 1st. And that's not a guarantee. That depends upon agenda and so forth. I understand.
All right. And there's, and I just want to ask this, because I assume I know the answer. But until those submissions come in, there's no way of setting the public hearing on this? That's right? Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda this evening, Slessinger. Slessinger, thank you. That's right, everybody get your name on, so we're good. Review revised subdivision plans submitted for proposed three lots subdivision located off Susquehanna Chual and Scutimuck Road in Island Mills. Said properties known in the village and Woodbury tax maps, section two, four, block one, lots two and three.
Hi, good evening. David Higgins from Langantelli Engineering and Surveying. As you might recall, this is a three lot subdivision for Victor Slessinger. It was last year before the board in November, at which time they, you had held and closed the public hearing. And at that meeting, there were, I guess, two, two things in addition to some, some cleanup on the map. But there were two sort of main things that we were asked to do. The first was that in order to identify potential impacts to significant trees, as you might remember, we talked about the, you know, the fairly heavily wooded nature of the, of the site. And instead of conducting a tree survey, we had staked out the disturbance limits, the houses, the driveways, the wells, and the septic systems. So we had that done and had advised the board in mid-January that that was complete. So I don't know if the board had an opportunity to go out and look at it yet, but we did have that done.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that.
Sure, okay. And then the other sort of main thing that we were asked to do was to provide a map showing a potential road layout for future potential subdivision of Lot Two. We don't really have any intention or contemplation of subdividing Lot Two at this time, but we did do as the board asked and provided a separate map showing a possible road connection from what was called Road D in the adjacent subdivision. I think it's called Trails End, and running through our proposed Lot Two and connecting into Scutimuck Road. So we had submitted that as well with the plans. It had some, again, some minor revisions, cleanup to, to the subdivision plan. So if you have any questions on either of those items, I'd be happy to talk to you about those.
The plan with, I saw where everything was staked out. Everything outside of that staked out area, for the most part, is going to stay wooded? You're not going to?
Yes. We staked out the limits of disturbance for the, for all three of the lots, actually.
All right. We've included a number of comments in the memo. They're carryovers from previous discussions we've had. I'm going to try not to go over those again, but it just facilitates the development of a resolution when you're ready. As far as, the applicant has granted you an extension from the close of the public hearing so that you can take action. So you should, and they can rescind that. If you plan on taking a look at the site, or you want to have a resolution developed, that'd be fine. But you should understand that they could rescind it, and then you'd have to proceed. So you should proceed with the application either to a resolution or to a site visit, whatever you're comfortable with, at the, with the materials you have. In terms of zoning, they've provided tables, and I'm going to just carry over one thing we've talked about before. The applicant has already identified to you an issue that there is between the boundary line of South Blooming Grove and Woodbury, and that that line is an approximation. And they've tried to put the information for the lot areas in the, in both communities to the best of their ability. But they've identified that for you, and to the extent that that needs to be covered in the resolution, I'm sure that Rick will provide something for you on that, so that it's clear that that is an approximation there. As far as utilities, the biggest thing you had was the issue of the water and sewer systems and on the village. The applicants advise you that they, I think they received unfavorable feedback from the village in terms of connection to the central water and sewer. But I think, I don't know what the form was, and I don't think we received anything. It was just a general comment they received. I don't know if the board's comfortable with that. If you need further information from the applicant or the village board to make a definitive determination there, because there are some things in your code, and I'll let Rick talk to that, that do require connecting to central water and sewer when it's available. Obviously, you can't do it if the, if the owning organization says no, but they have to say no. On landscaping, they've given you clearing limits there to show you that, and show that it's a heavily wooded area, and they're going to protect a lot of the existing trees. Understand that when the homeowner purchases the property, if they do develop it in this manner, the homeowner's not restricted on that area. So if you want to have trees maintained along the front line, you would probably want to have some kind of condition that it would prohibit. They're not going to plant shade trees along the street, and you're relying on the existing trees there, and you're actually relying on those. They should stay. Obviously, the applicant could do something, or not, the owner of the property could do something on their own property. We repeated some items on survey and legal in terms of dedication of the road right of way, and simply that's a placeholder so that we don't forget about it in any action you might take. Because they've offered to dedicate the strip for Scutimuck, which should be dedicated to the municipality. On the road connectivity, I'm not going to say much about that. I think John will talk to that. And just, I think I'll reiterate what the applicant said. The plan is intended to show at least one acceptable method of how this could be connected, but not necessarily that this would be it. The board wouldn't be bound to this in the future. It just shows that they're not creating a lot or a situation where no road connectivity can be provided. So it could be this, or it could be a better plan in the future. The only other thing is, on rich preservation, we commented a little bit on that about the application, about its elevation. We showed you a road profile from Google Earth, so you could try to determine whether, in fact, this site could be viewed from one of your view corridors, at least the closest view corridor there. And then we provided a number of comments under just the map preparation, a couple of little things there, typos, and I think the applicant can fix unless there's any question. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Questions for Dennis?
Dennis, some of those trees don't look like they're in good shape. I mean, they look very crowded in. I mean, how could we determine the number of trees that would be remaining there? Is there going to be a tree count?
Well, no. What they're going to do is they're only going to clear within the clear limits. So if you see the outline and the stakes where they say clear limits, all the others are remaining, both the heavy trees, the understory, the brush. I don't know if they're going to clean the brush, but anyway, the trees are going to stay, and they're going to stay in the mass that they have. If you wanted to authorize them, which might be a good idea, to clear out the understory and to try to, you know, get a little more, sometimes you get better growth if you cut a few trees down, so they get more sunlight. That's, I think, something you could do. But the intent, as I understand it now, is to clear out within those clear limits. Septic tank area, septic field, the driveway, the path to the well and the pipeline to the well, as well as the house. That's the basic clearing limits, and everything else stays as it is. So you will get the small trees and the bigger trees.
Now, the developer is still under the requirement to be hooked up to the municipal water and sewer. So the town, or rather, the village has to give a release for that, right?
Well, they have to go to the agency that has the central water and sewer and request connection. If they're denied connection, then I don't think they can be forced to do it. They can do it on-site. But there's a requirement in your code, and Rick can speak to this, about mandatory connection to central water and sewer when it fronts on it, and it's available. They've indicated that they've received unfavorable response, but generally, you require that in some form, either a minutes, a letter, a resolution, something like that. I don't know that we have that yet.
I could probably add some information to that, Dennis.
Okay.
Because I did go back through the file to see what we had when we, when we had that meeting with the, with the village, village board. And I did kind of look through the minutes, and a couple of things kind of occurred to me as I was doing that. Basically, for starters, one of the things that was said in the minutes, which I know we were kind of told at the time, was that water was not available. That was a private water system. So we had, we didn't even request to connect to it. We were told that it wasn't accessible. And we, what we were asking for was allowance to connect. At the time, we had two lots on Sequoia Trail. We were seeking to connect those two lots by way of a sewer lateral, or two, excuse me, two sewer laterals to the, to the sewer main on Sequoia Trail. And what we had asked for was to allow connection of that by way of an outside user or a extension of the sewer area. The other thing that I did notice was that it says in the section of the, of the code that talks about the, you know, the obligation of connecting. What I found was it said, and I'll read it, because I think I might have missed something until today. It says that all subdivisions as defined by Part II subdivision regulations located within existing village water and sewer areas shall be required to be serviced by municipal water and sewer, unless the village board exempts a given property because such property is experiencing an undue financial burden in connecting to municipal and sewer, it says. But the key word there that I didn't quite pick up until today was if your property is located within the existing village water and sewer area. And I don't believe we are. That's why we actually went to the village board. I think the intent there is that they want to make sure that subdivisions, in as much as the town can accommodate it, they don't want to have septics and wells for those properties. That's my interpretation of the section, anyway. So I just wanted to point that out and, I guess, put that forth and see if my reading of that is correct and that it only pertains to properties that are within existing village water and sewer areas.
I'll have to take a look at that. I don't know if there's any other provisions. I think that's a follow from when we used to have districts, and that word areas was probably districts at one time, and that was a mandatory thing. Now we're areas, and it's a little easier, but still, it may not be, and that may be the case. So I'll talk to Rick and see what we term, but that's one thing. The other one is, it's not a village of Woodbury-owned system, but it is, I thought, a village-owned system. And-
The water, you mean?
It's, yeah, it's a central water system, and I'm just not sure how that-
Yeah. I mean, I did have the minutes, and in the minutes, we were told that it wasn't available.
Okay.
I think it's, the ownership of that water district has changed probably since you met with the, with the board last time.
Oh, it's changed since we went to the village board? Oh, okay.
We'll figure it out.
Okay. And there was one other thing I did want to mention also, Dennis. And again, it was sort of something that I had just seen today. Otherwise, I certainly would have brought it to, to your attention earlier. One of the conditions talked about the need to establish water capacity for the project. And I looked up the, the section of the code that that, you know, where that, that requirement comes from, and it's actually in the zoning code. And basically, that section is under site plan requirements. And the site plan requirements are, as I understand it, for, for site plan applications, because it says under the section of applicability for zoning, for site plans. It also exempts the erection or enlargement, the application of the site plan requirements. It exempts the, it says it shall be required for the erection or enlargement of all buildings in all districts other than one family residences in R3A, R2A. And then it goes on to cite other districts as well. But all the houses that we are seeking approval on in the subdivision are in those two districts, and they are single-family.
Have to check that out, because this is for subdivision site plan and rich preservation. Whether that provides an exemption for this site plan, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, either way, they're, you know, obviously, when they build, they're going to have to put a well in. But what we would hope is that, you know, that can be part of the, you know, the normal course of applying for building permit. You know, a buyer of that lot, for instance, when they know where their house is.
Well, there's other sections there that say that you can't create a lot that doesn't have water and sewer. And that's what I thought we referred to, and maybe I've lost that reference on there. I'll take a look.
Yeah, I mean-
Okay. But I would think that that's, the only thing, that's a matter of cost and where the cost is incurred. Because I would expect that they can get the minimum two gallons a minute, and hopefully five gallons a minute out of a well for the site. This isn't a water-poor area, I don't think. You can usually develop that up in this area. So if that's the case, it's a matter of when they incur the cost to drill the well. What we've allowed in the past is that the board can go to the state, to the point of preliminary approval. And they couldn't get final approval until the well is developed. That way, they don't spend the money on this without getting preliminary. And once they have preliminary approval, my understanding is if you don't change anything, you just satisfy the conditions, they're basically, they can expect to get a final approval. So they know that it's money well spent on the well development at that time. And that's a fair way that we've handled it in the past, I think. So it's just a matter of when that money gets spent. And I think what Dave is representing now is that it may not be a requirement to do it before final. That I'll have to check.
Yeah, I mean, I know the code is rather luminous, so I did, I saw that one section, and that's how I interpret it, anyway.
You good, Dennis?
Yes.
Sorry.
I should have any questions.
Any questions for Dennis? John? Who's up? Mr. Collins?
My comments are basically limited to the concept roadway. The, we have three different comments, and the first comment is the fact is that we'd like to move the roadway away from the property line, because later on, it may, you may not be able to build it there. So we want to show something that can be built. That the 100-foot centerline radius of the road in that vicinity is low, we're suggesting 150-foot. And in fact, by putting the 150 feet in, it gets rid of that broken back curve that you should avoid at all costs. So basically, with those changes, the concept is reasonable. And with the understanding, a good change in the future.
Any questions? Jonathan?
You had to ask, that's for, for that.
Well, then, we're good. You're off the hook on that one.
I just wanted to ask Dennis one thing. Dennis, when this was before, it was months and months ago. I know I had asked about those, those pipes that were running through the lot. We didn't know if they were water pipes or, do you remember that?
I remember you asking about it.
Is this pipes or fence or something, is that?
No, it was, it were, it was pipes that were running through Lot Two by Shadow Lake. And when I went to look at the property, and it was in the summertime, and the pipes were sweating and they were cold. So we thought that maybe they could be water pipes, but we weren't sure. And I thought you were going to look into that.
Frankly, don't recall that. Was I here, or was Natalie here? Was me?
It was you.
It was me, yeah? I shouldn't have admitted that so quickly. No, 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 no.
I thought we had discussed that maybe there's a, I think, an octus camp, or there's a camp that was there that we thought-
We have had camps that have had water lines run above ground. Actually, you know, Skyline used to be that way.
Right.
When we came here, there were water lines run through backyards. There are a number-